Okay, Shasberry Select Board Meeting on Monday of January 5th, 2015 continues. We just concluded our Water Board Meeting. We'll move into our regular meeting now. Does anyone on the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda tonight?
No.
Nope?
No.
All right. Approval of minutes. We don't have minutes, do we?
Minutes from the fifteenth.
Do we have minutes?
Minutes from the fifteenth?
I didn't. Oh, yeah. That was something I looked at before Christmas. I cleared core, so I don't remember. If I can pull that up. We've all seen them, right?
Yeah.
Here we are. But there's bound to be one that says TMS on it, right?
Yes.
Oh, there it is. Right where it's supposed to be in my folder for the meeting tonight. Any questions? Corrections or additions to the minutes for December 15th that were circulated? I move we approve the minutes for December 15th.
Second.
Second by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstaining?
I also didn't approve the ones from December.
December 8th. Thank you.
No.
Yeah, that was when we had the question about the sidewalk fund, right? Okay, so we went through the meeting, the minutes on, for December 8th on December 15th, and there was a question about the sidewalk fund. We had that clarified, so there was no change there. Are there any other additions or corrections or changes?
On page six of nine, like I said, Ken Harrington asked to consider making Blueberry Hill a priority. I believe I'm not making the repairs on West Mountain Road from Blueberry Hill north toward Route 7. When we were talking about road repairs.
I just have to find it.
This is page six of nine.
I don't have that in here, at least, let's see.
That was for the December 15th.
Oh, 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 okay.
On the Road Department Report on Section 8, Number 8.
Okay, I was on the wrong meeting date. The fifteenth we just approved. So we'll have to reopen those. I'm trying, I'm trying. Ken Harrington asked to consider making Blueberry Hill a priority, and that should read how?
Yeah, that's what I got over here. What I'm saying is, the part I was thinking about was, when you're talking about road repairs for like the springtime or the summer, from Blueberry Hill north toward?
Route 7.
Route 7, yeah. Because that was real bad last spring.
But you're talking West Mountain?
West Mountain Road, yeah.
He wants to make West Mountain Road a priority from Blueberry Hill.
Right.
To 7A or the other one?
7A.
Harrington, Ken Harrington asked to consider making West Mountain Road from Blueberry Hill?
North to 7A.
North to 7A a priority. Okay. Okay, I, let's see. We've already approved those minutes. Let's just make a motion to amend the minutes we just approved.
Second.
The amendment is to make the change just indicated specifying where Ken Harrington, better specifying where Ken Harrington wanted to make a priority. Seconded by Mitch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, they're approved. And remind me if I don't remember to get these to you. Okay, so we were in the middle of December 8th. Any changes to December 8th? I move we approve the minutes for December 8th as circulated, which I can seconded by Mitch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? No abstaining? Okay. We have check warrant, number 14, in the amount of $71,169.29. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Major items here are, one, two, three, four, five, six entries, all of around $1,500, $1,600 to American Rock Salt. I think we all know what that is. $48.68 to William Barney Construction.
That's just gravel. That's the Barney pit.
I knew that. Benny County Sheriff for $1,772. Daley for, William E. Daley for $1,200, $7,031.54. That would be for gravel.
Well, the big numbers are all winter sand, actually, on this one.
Winter sand.
The $7,000, $3,000, and $5,000 are all winter sand.
Okay. Green Mountain Power for $1062. John Ray &amp; Sons for $1,400, $2,100, and a little bit more, that's our fuel. KAS, $1,750, that would be water monitoring.
Yeah, the bio landfill water monitoring.
TAM for $6,600, $6,500. And Trade B Environmental Services for $8,042.
They're the people who run Household Hazardous Waste Day for us. They actually take the material with them.
Right, right, okay. Those are the major items. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Payroll warrant, number 14, in the amount of $19,761.94. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Retirement warrant in the amount of $111.14. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Looks like a reimbursement for Terry for the $119.69.
Yeah, we needed oil for one of the tractors, and our account there wasn't available, so he just charged it.
Good.
Paying him back.
I move we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant, number 13, in the amount of $22,190.45. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
No announcements here.
Trying to remember. I thought I had something I wanted to say out loud, but I can't remember what it is now. Maybe it'll come to me later. Any public comments? All right. We are ready for our Treasurer's Report. Bill Fisk, please join us. Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year and a healthy and prosperous New Year to all. I have some very summary information for you. This is based on the, on where we are now in the seventh month of our fiscal year, and includes the effect of the warrants you just approved tonight. So I can't get it any fresher than that. The downside is I can't give you all those details because they're going to try to reproduce reports and pass them out, but the next time I'm here, I will give you that information in more detail. Just as a quick overview, our revenues are about 87% of the annual budget at this point in time. So on the revenue side, we're pretty close to being there. Major, major areas where we'll see some additional pickups will be in the state highway aid, for example. That's a significant area that still are expecting funds. State land use and some other items will come in as well. Charges for services. Our pay-as-you-throw revenue is approximately 50% of what we budgeted at this stage of the year. Most of our access permits are in. We're looking at, everything else is pretty close to where it should be at this time of year, but is really not of any great significance. I have transferred in, budgeted transfers from the operating reserves. So I've transferred in $10,700 from the reappraisal fund, $25,000 for Coal Hall, $8,500 for culverts, $5,000 for the garage, and $10,890 for the sidewalk. On the expenditure side, we are looking at this stage of the year, we're looking at having spent about $60,000, 60% of our budgeted expenditures for the year. I have transferred two reserves, the $180,000 that we had planned to, or had budgeted to spend. We have paid all of our debt service, and we have paid all of our community appropriations. So those amounts have been paid and are included in the expense. As of this evening, we have a current year excess of revenues over expenditures of approximately That number, I expect if we run close to budget, that number will eventually be consumed, and we will probably have a net operating deficit by the end of the year, which was budgeted. You had budgeted to have a $120,000 deficit, and we'll see where we come, but I think it's going to be closer to the $120,000 deficit at this point in time, as well as I can see. Our financial position continues to be strong. We have ample cash on hand. Our delinquent taxes have been, have been reduced. We have yet to pay all of the school collections, which we should do in the next week, and that will reduce our cash position significantly when we do that. Other than that, we have currently, we have a total fund balance, $364 with which we began, $364 with which we began the year, $440 current year. Leaves us with about an $805,000 fund balance today. As we said, that number's going to go down, and predictably it might be around, somewhere around $240 by the end of the fiscal year. So that's what we're, we're looking at. That's the quick, the quick overview of operating results. I know, Dave, you've had something you wanted to address with me regarding capital projects funds, or?
Well, yeah, we had been talking about it in general, more in the general budget sense of how to address tidying up, how we go about addressing the funds, similar to what we had done when I came in with the White Creek Road sidewalk. Best example is, is we have this in a separate fund where we can transfer in the sidewalk reserve money. That'll be in there for the project, and all the billing can go to that fund. Then we'll file for reimbursement from the state, and that's $77,000, which would be the revenue line, would then go into that fund. It takes all, everything out of the operating budget. It's something Bill and I have talked about with a variety of things, to try and keep things that are one-time events, or special projects, capital projects, out of the operating budget and into funds. So actually, it makes it even easier for, and when the public's coming, go, "Well, this is what we voted on. Where is it?" And you can just, "It's right here. This is where it was spent on, and this is where it was done." Because when you have some things in the operating budget, like the sidewalk is in the highway construction and maintenance budget, and it's there, it's probably not going to start before the end of this fiscal year, so, you know, it's just moving it down. If it was just a fund, it would just be there. So that's what we're looking to do, to have a little clarity on this.
Yeah, the town has, the town has many funds. We've, in the last three years, we've, two and a half years, I've grouped them into general categories. We have our general fund. We have a group of funds called designated funds, which are really, if you will, subset of the general fund. They're funds that have been set aside by the voters for particular purposes, but they're, they're available, and they could be undesignedated, if you will. We have a group of funds called capital projects funds, and this is what, really, what Dave and I have been discussing. The, the purpose of the capital projects fund is to account for, as the title suggests, capital projects. So we use the White Creek Road paving as an example. If we take that White Creek Road paving and account for it in the general fund, what happens is you have pretty significant swings in the amount of general fund activity from year to year, and it really doesn't represent the ongoing cost to government. It's the normal operating costs to government, or what it's supposed to be in the general fund. The capital projects fund sets aside the expenditures and the revenue to account for that particular project. And we've, our practice has been to set up a separate capital projects fund for each major capital project that we have. We have, currently have six funds, and they include the fire equipment replacement fund, the equipment replacement fund, the sidewalk fund, the White Creek paving fund, Coal Hall renovation, which includes some garage money, the garage money, and Florence BV Fund. What happens when we, we have activity in these funds, if, for example, we have a state grant, we would advance, assuming the grant's on a reimbursement basis, we would advance funds from the general fund to the White Creek, as an example, paving fund. Then, when the work is completed, we apply for reimbursement. We receive the reimbursement from the state in the form of a grant. We repay the general fund. The only net activity in the general fund is the local government share. It shows as a transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund. It's much cleaner accounting, then they have revenue from a grant in one place, capital projects expenditures in another place, when they're really not the ongoing activity of the, of the general fund. So that's the brief explanation of how this works. It's appropriate to do it. It means that we should be reporting to you with more detail on the activity in the capital projects fund, which we can do. We certainly can give you a balance sheet at any point in time on the capital projects fund. The mechanics, the limitations of the NIMRIC system are such that there is some transition from NIMRIC output to an Excel spreadsheet to combine revenues and expenditures and give you a report on each of these funds, but it certainly can be done. I think it's a much more, it's closer to what generally accepted accounting principles for governmental accounting really require, that you separate these. In a similar manner, we have some other funds called special revenue funds, and the purpose of these funds is to account for usually smaller grants. Our past practice hasn't been always necessarily consistent. You know, the accounting's there, the financial information is there, and the money's there. It's just how we've classified things in the past has not necessarily been consistent. But examples of this might be a grant to do a sewer feasibility study. That's not a capital project, but it's a one-time thing. It's basically providing a place to account for the capital, excuse me, these funds granted and expended on, on this particular project. That's one example of it. We have some others, many others as well. You know, our 250th anniversary was an example of that. We've had some recreation grants. So all of those are examples of what are known as special revenue funds. They don't meet the definition of a capital projects fund. In addition to that, we have, we have a fund called an enterprise fund, and that's our water department. And the reason it's called an enterprise fund, and the definition of an enterprise fund is that it seeks to cover the cost of the activity from user fees. So in our case, we pay for, for the water department, and the improvements of the water system by billing water users. If we had a sewer facility, we'd do the same thing. In a large municipality, if you have an airport, they do the same thing. I don't think we'll be building, we had an airport in Shasberry once, a long time ago. That's why we have an airport road, but that's, that's history. So that fund uses a little different set of accounting rules. It's counted in the same way that you would for a business. It uses full accrual accounting. These other funds use what's known as modified accrual accounting. In addition, we also have what are known as fiduciary funds, and those are the funds that the trustees of public funds manage. So we have these different fund groups. Where you see them, if you look at the, the annual financial statement, and you report in the financial statement, you'll see these funds organized. And I like to think of it as basically, almost a triangle, with the apex being, the top of the triangle, being the totals for each of these fund types, and then below them is a separate page of all the capital projects, funds activity are on a separate page, all the special revenues are on a separate page, all the fiduciaries are on a separate page. And because of the accounting rules, the water department is on a separate page as well. Do you have any question? I mean, I, you know, I-
Well, yeah, and this is, as you were speaking, I was thinking of another fund that we would be setting up soon. We have the $10,000 grant that we, a matching fund from the state. You know, we take the park fund, designate that as match, and then we have this fund where we can put in as revenue, the grant that comes from the state, the matching fund, and we can have all the things that we did there, all the, all the work we did there in one clean spot, so everybody can see. This is what we, we transferred funds in from the park fund into this. We spent the money reimbursed from the, the grant with the matching grant, $10,000, and this is where it all went. And it's just a clean, easy way for anybody, what happened with the park grant? Here it is. And which we'll have to submit to the state, which makes it very easy, too, because here it is. Here's the fund, here's our match, here's where every penny was spent.
Yeah, it, that's, that's a very good point, because in terms of administrative efficiency, if you have these, these expenditures distributed throughout your general fund expense, you've got to go in and find them and pull them out again, whereas if you have a separate, either capital projects or special revenue fund for this, you have them all isolated in one place, so that you can quickly answer questions and quickly produce reports as to what's going on.
I've got some, a few questions, starting with the park fund, because that one, to me, seems easier, where the money's in there upfront. So we have a park fund, we have $10,000 in it, we've got a grant, so we put that $10,000 in there, so we've got $20,000 in the park fund. So come the spring, we're going to do the repairs that we said we were going to do to Howard Park, and we'll charge those expenses to that fund. So it'll be there altogether, and that's nice and clean. Now, where it gets a little messier, I guess, and maybe it's, maybe I'm just leaving out a step, but the sidewalk fund, for example, is a reimbursement. So what we're suggesting we do with the money, the $97,000 in the, in the, that we set aside for the sidewalk, put that into the sidewalk fund, or a sidewalk fund. And then, when we build the sidewalk, we bill the expenses for the sidewalk to that fund. That fund comes down, and then at some point after that, we get a reimbursement grant. We're expecting $77,000, $78,000 from the state for building the sidewalk. To do it right, do the accounting right, should we then receive that $77,000, $78,000 into the sidewalk fund, and then put it in the budget as a transfer from a fund in the next calendar year, or? David and I were talking about this today, and how do we, the goal is to keep from thinking that we have $77,000, or we don't have $77,000, that really is already spent, but it's coming in, but we, you know, in this case, we've actually raised taxpayer money to build the sidewalk, and we're going to reimburse the, the general fund with that. What's the, what's the right way to keep that nice and clean?
Well, Dave and I had talked about this today, and my suggestion was that all of the accounting for the sidewalk is done within the sidewalk fund, as far as the revenues and expenditures. Now, if you're, of necessity, if it's a reimbursement grant, the town has to front the money. Town has to make the payments. So effectively, the, the payments will be made from the general fund, charged to the capital projects fund. When the revenue comes in, the credit will be to, the revenue credit will be to the, to the capital projects fund, but the cash flow will be back to the town. So the town's net expense, or what I think the town should budget, is the difference between the budgeted expenditures and the anticipated revenue. So if it's a, I can't keep track of the numbers, but let's say there's a $10,000 spread, the town has to pay $10,000, or 20%, whatever it is. That 20% would be the budget amount, and it would be a transfer to capital projects fund. That would be the thing that you'd be approving. And all the activity, the accounting for that activity would be in the general, excuse me, in the capital projects fund. So it makes it cleaner. It does what, what we're talking about with the capital projects fund, and that is to get that activity out of the general fund. The only activity the general fund has is really- The only activity the general fund has is really, at the end of the day, if you will, a payment of $10,000 toward this project. That's what the voters are approving. They're approving the concept, you know, you've approved the concept that we're going to expend $87,000 on this project, of which we anticipate we'll receive a $77,000, and I'm making the numbers up, $77,000 grant, so therefore, we have to pay $10,000, and that's really what they're approving, the payment.
Yeah, and so, it's, again, using White Creek as an example, it was budgeted only our share of White Creek. We deflated, what, $128,000 in anticipation of being reimbursed by the state. So, that project went 128, technically in the red, the check comes from the state, we zero that out, and the money goes back to the general fund. But like to do White Creek, it was only budgeted our share, our 20%. We never budgeted for the whole project for 100, whatever it was, 160,000 something. We only budgeted our 28%, knowing that we had to front it, it comes out of the general fund balance, knowing we're getting the money back. And then that just zeros out White Creek, and it goes back into the general fund. And that's what the sidewalk would be. Actually, in the sidewalk fund, I believe, is already 20% our share. So, we're actually just looking for when it's built, and whether that's fiscal '15 or '16 is hard to say. We hope to start in June, but it certainly won't be done until, you know, August. So, you know, the 20,000 isn't the fund. We're just getting reimbursed for whatever we have to front to finish the project, the 80%. We'll submit that to the state, and we'll get the check back from them.
Basically, the capital project goes in the red, the general fund covers it, and when they get reimbursed, it goes back to the general fund.
But the payment by the general fund on behalf of the capital projects fund is not an expense of the general fund. It is an advance to the capital projects fund. And so, it'll be on your balance sheet, but it won't affect the operating statement.
Gotcha.
Again, I think, you know, from looking at these all along, the idea that I had was just to get these kind of things out of the operating expense. In Terry's budget line for construction and maintenance, it has this $97,000, it just looks like he has another, almost $100,000 in that column, and really, he has no way to touch that at all. It had nothing to do with the highway department. You know, it was completely dedicated somewhere else. I think it just, you know, it inflates the number a little bit on one end, and when you put that in revenue on the other end, it kind of inflates that a little bit. It's better, it's just, we're not getting that revenue unless we spend this money. They kind of zero each other out there.
So, do we need another, I'm trying to think of this in terms of our current Excel spreadsheet that is our budget. Do we need another section that would be advances from the general fund to the sidewalk fund?
You already have that in the spreadsheet. It's titled operating transfers in and out. Now, you could pick at the language, but the effect, the accounting effect, it's there. So, it's already there, you know, and in the presentation, the financial reporting concept would be that the budget reflects the operating statement that's ultimately going to result from the application of the budget to operations. And under the accepted accounting rules, transfers between funds or among funds are below the excess or deficiency of revenues over expenditures. They, to use a business analogy, they come after net income. They're below the line, if you will. And so, they're not part of the activity, they're transfers out. They do have an effect on the fund balance, because the report is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So, you're taking a part of your fund balance and transferring it to another fund, and that's what you're doing. So, the worksheet has all the components. You know, I've had conversations with Margie about this, and I did a draft one a year, maybe, you know, was it last year, of how it might look to mirror the operating statement that's in the annual report. It's not changing any of the numbers, the deficits and credits are still basically the same, it's just how they're arrayed, and it makes the distinction, what is operations and what is a transfer of fund balance. That's the real difference.
And that, you're saying, that's what I'm looking at now?
It's there now. It's there, it's just the terminology is operating transfers in, operating transfers out.
Yep, I know that's there. So, okay, so, let's start again with the sidewalk. If we decide to fix the, do the sidewalk that way, we would transfer $97,000 into the sidewalk fund?
Hmm, I don't think so, because your, most of your $97,000 is being reimbursed by a grant, isn't it?
Yeah, because what you transfer into the fund is the 20, I have it here somewhere, it's $20,000 and something that we already have in the fund. That covers our 80%. It's $20,480 in the fund now. And what we're saying is that we would start construction with this, we would put the expenses into this, it would show red, we would be paying for it out of the general fund, then we get the check back from the state, which zeroes this fund out and just goes back, we reimburse the general fund.
Okay.
But in the meantime, you had all the expenses listed.
All the expenses right on. And the best thing is, you bring up the fund, and it brings up everything you spent.
That's the important thing, and they're all listed right there.
And then I can send that, yeah, if they want that, too, and then you send it to the state, and you have everything listed.
And if in the future, if you wanted to, you could have an internal budget included in that worksheet during that statement, too. You'd think of it like a construction company operating several contracts at the same time, and you have a construction budget for each of your contracts. That, you could do that internally, you know, it's not a voted budget type of thing, but internally, if you voted, you know, you intend to spend $100,000, and 10% of that is going to be engineering, and, so I'll show my lack of knowledge, structure, 10% is engineering, and 5% is something else, and the rest is materials, you can have budget line items for that. And we did that with White Creek. We broke down the different, so it isn't just White Creek paving expenses, but we broke it down into components.
From bow to the line, striping to everything. It's all broken out in columns. And if we do the, like, the class three fund, each one can then be a project just like that, and we'll list everything that's done in each side. The fund can be broken down into $5,000, $10,000 components, and each one can show exactly where the money went.
So, do we have to ask the voters to approve a new fund, reserve fund, or is that?
Voters approve all transfers into reserve funds.
And transfers in, so we'll have to say we're going to start a new fund, and we're going to transfer it.
Well, you have- Well, the sidewalk fund exists.
There, already there.
But no, part of it is, and that would be part of the warning, would be if we do the $40,000 capital improvement fund for class three roadways, and also to the paving one, up that to 35. Coal Hall already is in there.
I mean, the Coal Spring.
Coal Spring, yeah, that would be a new line in there, too.
So, the Coal Spring and the capital improvement would be two new lines.
Yes.
And that would get rid of a couple other confusing-
Okay, yeah, the breakthrough in my mind was that we don't transfer $97,000 into the sidewalk fund, we transfer 20,000, and we charge the sidewalk fund for the expenses, which essentially means we deficit spend until we get the grant back.
That's the reality, unfortunately, of-
Yes, I remember, and when we collect taxes, because I remember presenting Bill with the paving.
Bill was sweating bullets, I can't follow.
I used up a lot of what was left of our reserve fund, but fortunately, we got it back in six weeks, and we did.
Well, that's, that would go along with that idea of doing that, is we have to make sure we have enough fund balance to charge reserves, and if we're expecting a lot of reimbursement grants.
I don't see it as being significantly different in terms of cash flow from what the town's doing now. I just see the difference in how you're presenting the information.
Okay.
I think the issues are exactly the same. Do you have enough funds to finance this project and to carry the project? And if you, if you don't have a fund balance, you obviously have an issue, you're going to have to borrow money for doing it.
Okay.
I'm fine.
All right, I'm good. I think we're done with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
We are going to continue to talk about the budget, and you're certainly welcome to stay around and help us out if we need it, but if you need to do other things, I certainly understand.
Well, I have a pretty busy week scheduled, and I'm sure I'll work on the, getting the information together for the annual report as well. If you feel there's some particular need you have to have me here, I'll stay.
No, I don't.
All right, well, I'm certainly available, and I'll be happy to return at your next meeting and continue the conversation, if you prefer that. Certainly available by telephone and email all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folding right into that is our discussion of the budget. Now, just to start thinking about this, I put a little presentation together, just this is largely to get my thoughts down, and then after we go through this, we can go through the budget line by line, or however you all want to do it, but I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page of where we are with the budget. The highlights, just in the broad view of the budget that's, that we have right now, that you've been looking at, is total expenses are down slightly from what they were last year, but total revenues are down also. The main reason that total revenues are down is last year, as we were discussing a little bit ago, we had an excess fund balance, $120,000 excess that we used in lieu of taxes. The current rule of thumb is that if we raise the tax rate one cent, we bring in $40,000 in additional revenue. So, that $120,000, that was a three-cent tax increase that we didn't raise to fund last year's budget. This year's budget, which is a little, a little bit less, doesn't have that luxury. So, with the belt tightening we've done, we're looking at about a two-cent tax increase to fund a budget, a two-cent tax increase to fund a budget that's less than last year's budget, okay? So, you can think of it a tax increase, or you can think of it as last year, we got a bit of a free ride, because we had extra money in the budget.
$120K was actually part of $390,000. We had extra, and we spent 120 of that in this year's budget, to get it down to 270, which we expected in this year to be down to about 240, 42. You know, you like to keep about that much money in the, for these projects and things that pop up.
And to deficit spend for things that we're expecting reimbursement on. And then there was a question, we'll talk more about it, but there's that reimbursement, do we want to go ahead and count on that coming in? And I think the answer is yes, but if we don't count on that coming in, we have to, we would, my thinking when I wrote this was that we would have to raise that money in taxes.
No.
But now, no, that's not the case. We just deficit spend that, and so, we can scratch that part about the four cents. So, where we are is at a two-cent tax increase right now. The garbage business is getting more expensive, we've been talking about that. The Act 148 universal recycling is requiring us to spend more money to collect garbage and recycle, and eventually, it's going to require us to get organics out of our waste stream. BCRC has suggested how much more we should be budgeting to start to cover the additional reporting requirements and weighing and additional handling that's going to be required. We have built those suggested increases into the budget. They're modest so far, and we're exploring options, which we've talked about a little bit, which is possibly turning more of the garbage handling over to contractors, who are set up to track the laws and do the weighing and the tracking and the reporting that goes with Act 148.
And this is a lot of unknowns, actually, right now with Act 148. They're still trying to hash it out. It won't be until, you know, I mean, we have something on paper on July 1st, 2015, and then it goes yearly after that. There's different criteria that need to go into the solid waste. It'll change, but they did say that the first year expense will probably be higher than the subsequent years, but that's to be determined.
Yeah. Yeah, the first year expenses goes, go up quite a bit.
Oh, that's for web development, site development, all sorts of, you know, infrastructure-type IT infrastructure and everything else that goes along with that, but that should be a one-time expense, and it should go down after that. Or at least not go up too much.
We're proposing to create a dedicated class three roads fund that would fund capital projects, major improvements on the gravel roads, when we go out and dig it up and lay fabric and do major stuff like that. Currently, those, that's part of the operating budget. We had had $19,000 in the operating budget for that. We're proposing to put $40,000 into that fund, increasing it by $21,000.
Then, when the springtime comes, when the thaw comes, mud season, and we evaluate what kind of roads, you know, then we can select what area based on a number of factors, not just how bad it is, but how many people are traveling over the section, and we can bring it to the board, a suggestion, and a list of suggestions on which roads need to be addressed this year with this. And based on any grants we get from anything else, too, but this fund would be dedicated just to class three roadways, which are, in this town, the majority of them are dirt roads. And we can target some real construction for the worst areas year by year, and start getting them fixed up. I think part and parcel of that, too, we had the line for the engineer on there, too. But he comes up later on.
Yeah, that's a separate line item under subcontract cost, yeah, we'll mention that. But again, the idea with the funds is like we've been talking about with Bill, to help the accounting, and so, we can set aside $40,000, put it in this fund, and then spend it over the course of the summer without having to worry about our fiscal year changing in the middle of our construction season. We've got $40,000 in here, that's the money we're going to spend. We figure out what projects need it in the spring, and then we work over them over the summer, and we don't have to keep thinking, when the budget changes in the middle of the summer, how much of that is in, you know, how much is it, do we have to carry over, that sort of stuff. And, yeah, so, the sidewalk fund, we would move $20,000 is the way we understand it now, into the sidewalk fund. That would be our portion of that. Then we would deficit spend what we're expecting in the reimbursement.
Reimbursement from the state.
And then when that comes back in, that would credit that fund. I wanted to talk about the real estate transactions that we've been considering. There's several of them. One, and they're all kind of just in the talking stages, we haven't gotten very far with all of them, and we're not sure how far we'll get with them, but one idea that has been proposed and that we are pursuing is that we would swap unused land at Howard Park for the adjacent property here at Coal Hall that currently houses our sand pile that the road crew uses for operations. We set equipment on it. The reason we're thinking of doing that is that property is for sale. If that property's sold, we would- If that property sold, we would, it would hinder our highway operations. We think that if we can acquire that property at no cost to the town through a, a land swap in, for Howard Park land that's not being used in a park-like manner now, it's just forest, that that would protect us against losing access to that land, having to figure out where we're gonna run our, our garage operations.
I'd prefer you take out the no cost to town at this point. We don't know that for sure. That's, that's one of many possibilities.
Okay.
Okay?
That's a good point. The other one we're making inquiries into, and it hasn't gotten very far yet, but we think that the parking lot across from Bernstein's where we're currently storing our extra salt might be a good place for a town garage. We have made initial inquiries. We, we don't know if they want to sell it. What we observe is that they've got four acres of land that they park maybe twenty cars on. We think, you know, perhaps they would be willing to part with three of those acres and keep one acre for parking twenty cars and we could put a garage there. It, it's a site that is visible. It's a site that doesn't require an expensive road be built down to it as the transfer station site does. And so if we could, if, and this is just hope really, that if we could acquire that property for seventy thousand dollars, it would not increase the net cost of, of a new garage. It would, the cost of building that road wouldn't, wouldn't be needed.
Tim, that seventy thousand dollars to build a road into that proposed grad site, there is no way. I've done this for sixty years of my life. That road up there where they've got the road designed to go, you've got enough earth behind, it's just about halfway where the road comes in or where they propose the road, road to go. And you could use the fill that's already there to build your road. So I would say, I would say you'd have to take that out.
You don't, I'm basing that on the estimates that the engineering, engineering estimates that were in the last town.
That's all right. I understand that, Tim. But if you go up there and look at the site, on the far end of where the garage would be, there's already a road there that they used to go down there and get the equipment in to take the trees out when they cleared the lot. I don't think, I think you could build a road to go in to where that garage is, even if you came by the garage and came back to it at no cost. And that seventy thousand dollars should go to building the garage, not to buying more land or building a road.
So you're advocating for building the garage at the previously?
You've already got the land. Why do you want to go out and spend money to buy more land when you've already got it? And some people have said to me, oh, they'll go up there and they'll hide, the road crew will. And what do you got a foreman and a town manager for? That's their job to see the road crew in a pair hiding behind the garage.
Art. I, I was, Tony and I went up there and looked at the plot and I, I said to my God, how would you ever put a garage down there and have equipment, sand piles, salt sheds, all that sort of stuff? It just is, it's just this huge ravine and, and I just think that there's so many other places that would be a lot more suitable for equipment and all that sort of stuff. It was just mine.
I can, I can, I'll go up there with you, Art. We can look at it different. I mean, I, I look at it different because I moved there my whole life.
Okay.
Well, it's, you know, there's plenty of room there for equipment to me. When I worked for the town, we had all the town sand up there at that, at that site for the whole winter.
Well, I can't speak for all the board, but my thinking is we've been trying to get a garage built and we failed twice to get a garage built. The voters didn't approve it. One of the things that we've heard from the voters is that they don't like that site. Part of it is that there's concern about the water. I don't share that concern. Personally, I think the garage is probably the, you know, one of the few things that could function on a place that doesn't have potable water. You certainly can't, couldn't run an office building there or, or residences. But I think part of it too, that I've heard is that they don't want to, the voters don't want to spend a million dollars for something that's in a hole in the forest that they can't see. And that's one of the things that's, I think, attractive about the Bernstein is it's, it's on the road, it's, it's, they can see it and it's got easy access to, to, to all the roads when the crew needs to get out and start doing things. It comes out onto a paved road.
It's also an industrial zone. Bernstein is an industrial zone also.
Yeah, they're both industrial zones.
They're both an industrial zone.
Jay?
Just two things on the Bernstein site. Number one, I think one of the things that people have expressed is that they'd like to have some industrial or something in, inside the town. And that's probably one of the last sites if we ever do get a sewer system in where you could actually have something other than a town garage, that they would provide employment and so forth. The second thing is, is I believe that, I may be wrong, but I believe that's in a flood zone, which may be a hassle as far as solving, even if everything is concerned.
That would certainly something, be something we'd look into as we go along, but I'd be surprised if it was in flood zone because we just don't have that many.
That's the only place.
Yeah, over to, it misses the parking lot. There is the flood zone, the plane that goes right through, it actually goes right underneath their building and out along the railroad tracks there. But it doesn't impact the whole parking lot. I, and again, this is very preliminary of, of looking at this. It just as we were doing the shed, this big wide open empty parking lot had some attraction to putting the garage centrally in town. But this is very preliminary in details, like exactly where is the encroachment line and other factors that might affect the property. And they haven't said they want to sell it either.
Right.
We've made inquiries to them and they're mulling it over.
Thank you. Two other pieces of property we're looking at is at the entrance to the landfill in the industrial zone, that is, the landfill and all of that property around there, there are two residences that were grandfathered in and can remain residences until you decide to do something different with them. But to me, they just, they're, they're out of place. There's that one trailer that's right there by the entrance and then there's a little cottage next to it. And that little cottage is actually for sale right now, which is what has prompted us to think about, would it serve the town to, to acquire those two properties, which by all accounts are basically part of the land, the landfill land now and go ahead and acquire We think there's, there, there could be some protection there. And this is what if, I don't know if this, how, how likely this is, but you know, if somebody goes in there and decides to drill a well, because my understanding is, Art, you said that those properties now get water.
Across the road.
Across the road.
There's spring across the road.
From surface water, which I talked to some state, a state guy about that and they will always recommend that you not get your water from, from surface water.
It would never pass, I mean, you know, a bank would never loan anybody money to buy those places with that water supply.
Right. And so, you know, somebody does drill a well and there is a problem with the water, it could be a lawsuit. You know, it, it might not be from the landfill that they have the water problem, but they'd certainly, I wouldn't be surprised if they wanted to blame it on, on that. Like I say, it's, it's currently for sale, so it's got us thinking, you know, should we go ahead and try to acquire these properties now? What would we do with that property? Well, it's another possibility would be a garage site that wouldn't be down in the hole. Ken, I understand your argument about that. I think some of us.
I'll take the whole board up there and I can show you a different, I'll look at it, I think.
I'm sorry, say again?
I say if we, if I've had the whole board up there, being my history in construction, I, I think I can show you how that could be used.
Okay. Well, we should definitely do that.
I'd be more than happy to, Tim. It's, I mean, that whole area is a gravel pit, it's natural gravel and, you know, you wouldn't need to spend any more money, put all your money right into the building.
Okay. Well, some of us, you know, based on the engineering estimates and what, you know, some of us see when we look off the edge of that cliff down there, think an expensive road is called for. And that one possibility which we can, we can debate in the future would be that.
I'd be more than happy to go up there with it, anytime.
One possibility would, they would move the garage out of that hole up to the top, which is bound to save something. Maybe not the full cost of those residences, but again, the cost of acquiring those residences would be on, on par with what we originally thought was the cost of a road down there. So, you know, one possible use for that might be to put a town garage there, say the Bernstein thing doesn't work out. Another possibility would be perhaps solar installation. We just went through a long debate about the solar installation and decided we were not comfortable putting solar panels on the landfill cap itself, but this would be off the landfill cap and in a, several acres where we could generate electricity at, at a discount.
So it's basically food for thought.
Yes. And to, you know, to, to make it aware to the public who are watching on TV that these are the things that we're, we're thinking about. I've been debating for several days whether or not we include the, the seventy-eight K for the sidewalk reimbursement into the, our revenue estimates. The answer to that is yes, we just learned from, from Bill. So, so yes, our, our tax rate increase we're looking at is two cents, not four cents. We're expecting twenty K from the sale of the old mower and the old forklift.
Yes, I went back over that with Steve, who's pretty sharp on these things. I would consider that based on talking to him and Terry and a couple of the other guys kind of even low, but I don't want to get carried away. And that would be in next fiscal year because I think it'd be wise to keep the forklift around while we go through a cycle with the new loader. Because if something really goes wrong with the new loader, we can skip off the major parts of the forklift and we still have quite a pile of scrap metal to sell. So I think twenty thousand is a, is a conservative figure for those two because it is the mower and the giant forklift. So I think we'll do well with that.
You mentioned gravel roads consultant. This is just an idea that Dave and I had and we decided to go ahead and put some money into it, just find a professional with another set of eyes to come in and look at our roads and see if we're doing everything we can and if we're, if we're, you know, there are places that we can make improvements that will keep us from, for example, you know, shutting down, you know, Shasbury Hollow Road every spring.
Some areas get to be the same, same area has the same problem. You know, year after year, there's only so much gravel you could throw at it. You get an engineer, just a new set of eyes, design a plan. When we decide what roads are the worst, what, hire someone, look at it, make a plan, spend the money, do it once and you're not coming back again and again. Because some areas do flare up all the time, best I can tell from everybody. And there's some puzzling parts like Horton Hill, past Rollin, where it is, like hundreds of them. There's nice road, then a hundred more, then a nice road and a hundred, and it's like, okay, what's with these, these spots? And I think, I think it's a reasonable amount to have someone come in and look at the real difficult areas and say, this is what you should do. We had success when we brought engineers in over by Brennells, a very simple fix, which has held up under all kinds of water so far. Keep your fingers crossed, not on wood, but you know, it has worked so far. And I would think, you know, in most of the things that would get proposed by consultant, we'd have very good results from. And it is really, not that there's anything wrong with what's been tried, but it's a new set of eyes and maybe not have to keep going back to the same places to address the major issues. And some of the roads, I think we all concede, do have some interesting problems to them that we need to get solved.
And we're proposing to increase the, the paving reserve by ten thousand so that we are in a position to cover the, the maximum match if we're able to get a, a, a full paving grant to do things.
Thirty-five thousand is our twenty percent and we should just have it available because whether it's East Road or, or any of the other longer roads, it's, let's get the extra hundred yards in and no point in stopping somewhere.
Is, is that included in the fixes we're talking about for Harvest Hills?
No. No, that, well, it's a paving, it would be the matching amount for the maximum we could get on a paving grant from the state. You only get a paving grant for a class two road. Harvest Hills is class three. Harvest Hills could be addressed either through the class three road fund or, and what's gonna happen, I, I believe, is one year we are not going to get any grant from the state for a hundred and eighty-five thousand. By having this as a paving fund, we could use that money in that year to work on our class three paved road.
Yeah, we are gonna have something in there to figure that in for next year, this year, right?
Well, we'll have the thirty-five thousand in plus the, the class three road fund. So that gives a total of like seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we can't let that go another year.
No, we have to address that lower of what, fifty yards or not even fifty yards we were on.
Yeah, that, that first corner.
That very low thing. And we, we do have this stuff coming, the seal with, with Norm. I don't know where that truck went to, but it's not here.
It's not here.
It's not here. It's just getting colder and worse, but it was ordered. I don't know where he went to, but it was ordered. But yeah, it's one of the, the projects. Again, it's a matter of scale.
Yeah.
We have to decide based on volume, the deterioration of the road and what's available.
Right. You, you and I talked about that stone seal.
Yeah. Those options we can definitely look at and, and again.
Because that can't be allowed going another year. That goes another year, we'll have a dirt road.
Yes. That road is very bad at the bottom and it's pretty, getting close all the way up and through the whole way. Again, after we get this started, we can start looking at ways to generate some, some, another stream of money to really address a lot of the road problems. I would think a lot of them are, are in fairly good shape now, but there's a good twenty percent that probably need different work done to them. And it just has to, you just have to keep on it.
Right.
So you're saying put the ten dollars action, a paving reserve, and if we don't get the MACT grant, use that in the capital improvement.
Yeah, because it would be a paving reserve. It's not to match the state. If the state wants to give us, you know, the other hundred and sixty thousand, great, then we'll pave as much as we possibly can.
I think a hundred thousand.
Yeah. But yeah, like last year, we only used twenty-eight thousand, I think it was, as the match. Well, seven thousand would have gone a long way to Harvest Hills. I mean, that, that's the thing, we have paved class three roads that have to be addressed too. And it's more than just crack ceiling at twenty-five hundred. Slow buildup over time, but the, again, the best part about a fund is the fund balance can roll over. So if we don't expend the whole thing, we're saving it for next year. When we get into roads like Harvest Hills, when they have to be completely redone, it's gonna be a very expensive proposal. And it can't be put off forever. So that's something we have to start thinking about planning for as we move down the road. Of course, again, we get to, debt service starts dropping off dramatically fiscal seventeen, we can start thinking about putting in larger sums away to do some of these major projects before they turn to gravel.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, that's the next step down there.
We have another issue.
And then just one kind of nice thing that we're proposing to do is create a historic site at the headwaters of Coal Spring. We got this idea, I got this idea when I saw a grant that looked like it was a good match for an idea that I've had for a while. The Coal Spring, the headwaters of Coal Spring are a historic town water source, have been for generations. Coal Spring, when Turner Park built Park McCullough House, he wanted the water from Coal Spring for that house and built a, a pipeline from Coal Spring to, to Park McCullough. It goes over a, a stone bridge that's on my property. There's a little picture there. That beautiful bridge is just to take a water pipe to, to Park McCullough. Back in the day, when you were Turner Park, you could, you could do those kinds of things.
Eighteen sixty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Eighteen sixty-five as well.
We have a number of partners that are interested in seeing this idea go forward, including the. including the, the Bennington Water Board, the Park McCullough House. They're all kind of all excited and, and interested in seeing the project go forward. We're hoping to do this mostly with grants. I'm suggesting we, we budget ten thousand dollars into a fund to get the project going, to see what kind of engineering and permitting and maybe initial design might be involved. And also to be prepared to, to match any grants that we might be able to get. The initial grant that we've applied for is a Vermont Arts Council grant that seeks to hook artists up with civil projects to, to make them pretty and nice. And we made the first cut on that grant, so we're in the finalists. And I'm, I'm very hopeful that we'll get that. That might be fifteen thousand there. And it's not a match. It's straight toward the project if we get it. But most of that is intended to get artistic design into the project. And the idea that I've had is that we, we, I would like if we could create something where you could go there and drink the water. There's, I'm sure lots of permitting issues and people will tell you that, you know, you can't drink surface water, but I'd like to try. And also, you know, create a historic marker in a place where bikers and walkers can pull off the road and have a-
And that's right near Coal Spring Road? Right on it?
Yep.
It's, it's off of Roland.
Yeah, it's-
Tough Roland Road.
Pardon?
It's on Roland Road.
Roland.
Well, it's, it's on Horton Hill, turns into Coal Spring, and then Rollin' comes in there and Colter comes in there. And it's right in that little cluster of, right in there.
I think to start with was part of the bicycle tour too, the Vermont Rural Bicycle Tours. Didn't someone thought that was a good idea? Who was the person that represented it or?
I don't think it goes that way.
Um, yeah, the, well, the Bennington Bicycle Club is, is also a partner in it. And they're, they're active with that, that, that road race group. But yeah, that, that bicycle tour, if, you know, if we are able to create a, a site there, this would be a great detour for them to, to stop and see. And this is just kind of an aside. This is just something I was curious about. And so I did a little research. And I was looking at, and this is where Shasbury ranks in terms of municipal taxes and our tax rate. And what I was looking at is other towns that are around thirty-eight hundred in population and have around fifty miles of class-three roads, because that's what I see as driving the major part of our expenses. And there you can see comparison with some of the other towns. And it says we're on the low end. So it's, I think we're, we're doing okay in terms of providing service, keeping the roads open, and, and keeping taxes low.
What's on the left is the total taxes raised? Is that, or the total town taxes raised?
Right. The taxes, the, the total amount of money raised in taxes.
Town, not, not school taxes, just the town taxes.
Just town taxes.
And then, and over here on the right is the rate.
No, one on the rate is the tax rate in cents or dollars per hundred.
Yeah, that's, that would, that's, that's taking effect a grand list, okay? Now, yes. Okay?
Yeah. Yeah, you take the tax rate over here, multiply it by the grand list value, and you get the amount that you raise in taxes over here. So that's that. And are there any questions? Do you want to go through the budget spreadsheet? I've, I've circulated that. I have highlighted major changes in red. And so I have, has everybody had a chance to, to see that?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any, any questions, comments, issues?
You can walk right in front. Don't worry, don't, no.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, come on in. We're very-
It's not suited very well for the-
If, I hear they want the nine-one-one address. They want to change my address.
Okay, you're going to talk about that in your report, right?
Yeah, that's coming up in the, in a little-
Yeah, if you want to-
No, no, have a seat. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have a seat. We'll be getting to that in not too long.
She doesn't want to do that, or are you still talking?
Yeah, no. That's, that's been taken out, yeah.
I'm going through a couple of things that I saw. The coal reserve. We did twenty-five thousand last year. We want to do another twenty-five thousand this year?
No, I believe I dropped that to twenty thousand this year.
I might be looking at the wrong one. I mean, I-
Uh, I thought you did drop that to twenty thousand, and I'm looking at it right here on line fifty-nine.
Repairs and maintenance, I dropped to twenty thousand. Now, are you talking about back here?
I'm just looking at the reserve fund.
Reserve fund, transfers to reserves is ten thousand.
And because in the back, we have the balances of these funds, right?
No, for this part, the back, when you get to transfers to reserves, is what we're going to ask to be put in the fund for this coming year. For fiscal sixteen, so. So that's where you have the increase to thirty-five thousand, the new class-three fund, the Coal Spring Historic. And on that one, the Coal Hall Reserve Fund, what we're asking for for fiscal sixteen is ten thousand. That's what was asked for for this year. And all these remain the same except for the paving grant and the two other new ones.
What's the difference between operating transfers with this fund here, Coal Hall Reserve Fund, and this Coal Hall Reserve Fund?
I don't know what, what, what component is left in there.
We have on the first page here, transfers in, and then-
Yeah, you're talking about line fifty-nine where we transfer in twenty-five thousand dollars.
And about in the back, it's got a ten thousand dollars, which is what it was last year, but that one has.
Yeah, give me a line number. I'm sorry.
No line number on there.
Yeah, they just don't print out line numbers. This-
I should have printed up Lamer. It's, I'm asking about the first page. You have operating transfers in from other accounts, Coal Hall Reserve Fund, twenty-five thousand.
Right.
And then on, then the last page, you have transfer to reserves. So is this an income thing where we tran- no, I'm confused.
Transfers to reserves is what we're asking for, what we're asking to be raised so we can put in the reserves for that. In this column here, where you're talking about, that's what will go, be transferred in as revenue so that we can spend it in fiscal sixteen.
So we're asking for another ten thousand to be raised to go into the fund. We're proposing to spend twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, to transfer twenty-five thousand in.
Out of the fund.
Out of the fund.
Because there were thirty-three thousand in there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Plus what was transferred in today. This year's transfer in.
Thirty-three, okay, got it. Okay.
Which is one of the reasons why we're asking to have these funds kind of-
So yeah, so we're, we're proposing to increase over previous years what had been spent, because we're going to do some repairs in here this, this next year.
Yeah.
But the, the transfers, the, the amount that we're putting into the fund is the same as it's been in previous years?
Question on the overtime. I mean, we, we upped that three percent, but we have yet to hit what we've allocated through the last years. Public Works Highway overtime. I mean, actual last year was nine thousand. I don't know what this year's going to be or what fifty percent of the year's looking like. But if it's anything like last year, I can't imagine it's that much more.
Well, the three percent is strictly to make up the difference in if the, the proposal was for a three percent pay raises, the three percent increase in the overtime is simply to add that increase into the overtime rate. The amount of overtime used, I think, from changing a few of the operational things already, is going to increase the, the overtime spent, up to the point of this budget, when then we'll convert it into comp time or something else, if, if we get to that point.
And why is that? Because of the different hours or?
Well, yeah, for one thing, I have them starting earlier on snowy days. They're, they're out now at four, which they all want to do, and they, they all ask to do, and I think it's safer and better for the town. I think they'll be out a little bit more to, like, over this weekend, it wasn't a question. They were out salting and sanding as the weather changed and the roads got icy. I'd rather see a, a little bit bigger expenditure to get the roads started sooner. We had an, an incident with a school bus to start the year off where it couldn't get up a hill. And it, in just talking with, with people around, if the average route is taking like four hours, the average snowplow route takes four hours to do one pass, you know, to do it completely, not one pass down the road. But so they had been starting a little bit later in the morning, so they wouldn't be finishing one pass on the route till almost nine o'clock. So by coming in earlier, it might cost us a few hours overtime, but the roads, when most people are getting up and going to work and the school buses are moving, are going to be in better condition.
I understand what you're saying, but I still think, I mean, it's, why do we, I mean, they should be, if they're coming in and putting overtime during storms, they should be getting a day off or something to keep the overtime limited, I think. It's-
I think to a certain extent, the amount of overtime budgeted, I, I, my feeling is it's kind of small here for what you're considering asking these guys to do. They're virtually on call twenty-four, seven during the winter. And when we, if, if we get, and we haven't gotten to the point, but if we get to the point where we exhaust this amount of overtime, then we would consider ordering days off. It's just my kind of feeling that if they're going to come in, we should pay them the overtime first before we tell them, okay, you have to take next Wednesday off.
Well, we're saying, well, um-
Well, we're not really saying it now. We have the option, we reserve the option.
But if we start paying too much overtime, then we should consider getting another person and breaking up the crews or something.
Well, the, the, the snow plowing overtime is, is the most unpredictable thing we have.
Strictly the winter, strictly the winter.
And there's no overtime during the summer. We would never, in my opinion, we, you know, I would never recommend increasing the crew. If we had got to the point where we were burning up so much overtime, maybe we'd have to hire another part-time guy to come out and plow with us.
I mean, I'm just saying, we, over the last, what, three, two years, we've come nowhere close to what we've budgeted. So.
Yeah, and, and, and that is, could also be a function of not applying, you know, not allowing them to apply enough time to the roads. I mean, I hear, I hear complaints about the roads. Maybe I'm trying a different path to get them out earlier and more often and see if we can address some of the road issues. We were fortunate in getting through the Christmas weekend without, without, for the amount of material we put down with no overtime on that. But then you get, you know, that, that silly thing about Thanksgiving, that already chewed up a chunk of overtime for this year, but they have to be out. And because maybe it's, if you're asking the guy to do all this stuff and he's on call all the time, and then, you know, okay, well, we want to cut overtime, so you're going to be off next Wednesday. Stay home. It's, you know, there's a equity issue somewhere in here where we have to find the balance to, I think, of allowing them what is kind of part of their pay is, is expecting a little bit of overtime. And it's not even that large an amount if we use the whole thing. And there's no guarantee we're going to use this, but this also comes into, if you start cutting it and we start having a huge winter here, we're just going to be taking it out of the general fund anyway.
Well, Dave, isn't it in fact, I mean, if you're just hiring another man, it's not going to do anything for you.
No.
No, you don't have a truck.
You're going to have another truck to go with.
You have to hire the truck. It's not a question of like-
You almost got to hire a truck and a man.
Yeah.
Usually when an organization has overtime, they're understaffed. But obviously, that's not the case here. We're just, different timing in the winter.
Well, yeah, for, for here, it's just that there's, there's always something to do. It's really just because they have to come out and work like days in a row. It's just, um, yeah, it's, it's the unpredictability of the business. And for us, it's very fortunate. It's only for three or four months out of the year. And you have a nice winter, they don't make it. They have a bad winter, they'll, they'll make a good percentage of this. Will they ever use it all? And, and frankly, I've discussed it all with them. And it's in, it's in the personnel policy that the town has the right to start moving towards those things. You know, assigned days off, comp time, that would all be up to the board if we ever got to that point. At this stage, I don't see any reason for it to be different than-
Yeah, what Dave has budgeted for overtime is comparable to what previous boards have budgeted for overtime. Mitch's point is the actuals in overtime have been quite a bit less than that, maybe five thousand dollars maybe. And Dave's point is, rather than trying to save money on overtime, I think we can improve the road conditions by spending that money on overtime. And five thousand dollars to make the roads better is the cheapest that we're going to find anywhere.
Sure. And the, the youngest, the youngest planning was the result of the fact that the roads did not get plowed until late in the morning.
Yeah, it's, you're, you're saving time.
And we've already been, we've already, most of us had already traversed the roads.
Yeah.
Which probably made it more difficult to plow to begin with.
It makes everything more difficult. It makes everybody's, you know-
We didn't have much of winters a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's the thing. That's the other thing with playing with this too much is one bad winter, a couple of weekends, like when we had Christmas there, you're really going to have a hard time with gravel and everything else.
Yeah.
If it's not bad, we'll have a surplus in this.
But that's good.
Keep going, Mitch. We're, we're happy to have somebody else go through this line by line, because our, our eyes are crossed when going through it so many times. Well, I, I mean, those are a couple of things that's jumped out. Everything else, I don't really have a problem with.
Can we look at the sheriff's budget?
Yep.
I took the sheriff back down to its budget from this year because the sheriff had informed us that there wouldn't be an increase. So we didn't increase the hours or anything.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, if you did put in some extra, could we use it? But I see you backed it back off. Okay. Because I checked with them and they would not be going up on their rate.
Yeah, so we just backed it off to where it was last year.
Okay.
Where this year.
Right.
But I, I would like to mention that we are on the low end of what we spend for the sheriffs according to the size of our town.
Mm-hmm.
Other towns in, around this, in Bennington County spend a lot more than what we do for equal, equal size.
You got those numbers? Do you have those numbers?
I talked, I talked to the sheriff, yes. Yep.
Well, we know Palinol doesn't use the sheriff, but we know they, they have a full-time constable, essentially a police department, that spends forty or fifty thousand dollars a year on, on, on that. So-
No, I just-
Well, I mean, that's a good point. We, we debated that a little bit, but should we consider more sheriff time?
That was my proposal. Like, everybody said that now we just send them in a different direction, but-
Target, if there's calls for speeding in certain areas.
In talking to the sheriff, he says that towns our size spend a lot more than what we do.
I'm happy with the way it is.
We'll see.
It was, yeah.
We'll, we'll leave it, but just-
I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence. Anybody else?
I think we, we ought to look at it after we work with, on Howard Park.
Yes.
I mean, I think that's the issue. You know, again, you, you're not going to get vandalism in the middle of the day. You're going to get it at night. And you're going to need that extra. But we'll see. Let's see how it works out.
Did you want to make a motion, Art, that we increase spending on sheriffs?
Yeah, sure. But what is it, twenty hours a week now?
It's twenty hours a week now. I don't have my other sheet with me because I did that increase on-
You had something on it, didn't you, Dave?
Yeah, on, on the other one, but I brought up the latest version today. I have to get a laptop. I can-
I'll make the motion to go to twenty-five. Try that.
All right, we have a motion to increase the, the sheriff hours from twenty to twenty-five. I'll second. Discussion?
Sure. I don't see anything that's changed from this year, or next year that has changed from this year. And we gave him a fairly large increase last year due to the fact that he lost his SNAP, whatever, whatever it was called.
Cops grant.
Well, cops, cops grant.
Every town faced that though.
Yep. So, and it was a, you know, twenty hours is good. Seems to be good.
What, what would 25, an extra five hours a week add per cost?
Just about to do that. Let's see, it's five hours per week times 52 weeks times 25, 50? $6,600.
We go from 26 to 33. Or 34. 26, 7. I don't see the need for it. I don't, will they, it'll be, if they come up and we start using them for Howard Park, none of the other streets will get, that'll be, that'll use all the time to do that. But, you know, if they're gonna come up and do that, I mean, that was what Tony talked about.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just talking about at least a drive-through Howard Park or checking on Howard Park. That takes less than an hour.
Yeah, I think, I think, what you do is you try and get Howard Park on a regular patrol. It's, when, when they turn the sheets in, this building's always on, I often find slips in the doors that they check this building, they check the fire departments, it would be another stop. And, and it is a good deterrent to activity in the park, just to have the crews that drive in, drive through, you know, just so that people know somebody's keeping an eye out. And they would also be doing lots of other things. You know, another five hours a week, 250, 250 hours a year is more time than driving on the roads and doing enforcement, traffic enforcement when they're directed, things like that.
Well, I don't, I think that's, $6,600 is not a lot of money. And I think having, as an addition, having the part, the sheriff cruise Howard Park on a daily basis as opposed to subtracting that time from the sheriff services, sheriff services that we're getting would be a good thing. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of increasing the sheriff services from 20 to 25 hours, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining? So it's four in favor, one opposed. No abstentions. The motion carries, so we will add $6,600 to that. Wish I could do that in my hand. Oh, here we go. So sheriff services go from 26, 5, 20 to 33, 150.
I mean, for instance, why couldn't you just give the $6,600 to the constables, have them do that during the day? Wouldn't that be the same thing?
Have to buy him a gun.
Yeah.
That's, that's the whole constable.
Debate.
Debate, which we've, we've had a couple of times.
Yep. I agree to disagree.
All right.
Any more, uh, more talk about the budget? Any?
Well, there was, so you just increased that another, so it's gonna go up two and a half cents now, based on whatever, 6,000 is what?
It's a quarter of a cent.
Quarter of a cent, so two and a quarter cents. Two, two, five. So what, where else can we cut to get, make it even?
Well, I think you gotta remember that this two-cent increase, we took $120,000 out of the general fund to cover this year's expenses.
I understand.
Even inflation with cutting what we've already cut out, the two cents doesn't even make up for the $120,000 that we took out this year. There is a net decline in the amount of money we're spending.
Mm-hmm. Revenue's not as great either.
No, and that's getting rid of that 120. The, the decline in revenue is because we're not taking it out of the general fund.
How, how much are we spending a year on gravel?
It's 60,000, it's budgeted for 60,000. About four or five years ago, it was over 70,000. Most years it comes in under 60. I don't know if that's good or bad. I've driven on the roads, I don't know if we need more or less at this stage. But when we had a bad winter, I guess it was a couple of years ago, it hit like 79,000. But that was covered, you know, it's in excess, it was covered in the general fund.
Well, like you and I have talked about, this time of year, you've got no choice.
Yeah, I mean, this past weekend.
Well, and also, what you and I have been talking about, you don't go along the roads and see all kinds of hardheads laying outside the road.
Yeah.
I think there's plenty of gravel on the roads.
Yeah. The budget, the, the budget changed not at all for gravel.
Right.
And I, I think we did have this discussion that it's more, I'd like to evaluate the type and use of gravel.
Right, that's, I think that's, that's critical.
I don't even know if we need.
And the kind of gravel we're using.
Kind is very important. I don't know if we need more or less. I don't wanna change it without having something to hang my hat on one way or the other.
Oh, no, no, I don't either. But I mean, like I say, generally, you can tell if there's lack of surface gravel, you'll find base stones.
Yeah.
Alongside the road after they've graded it. And I haven't seen one in years.
Yeah. Again, that's a lot of the things we have to start looking at as we get into maintenance and why some roads are like that and why others are, you know, completely pockled.
Just potholes, just dump the gravel and don't fix it.
No, no. I mean, it's a good temp at this time of year, but the real fix.
Well, it's the only thing at this time of year.
Yeah. Which we'll be doing again tomorrow.
Right, but in the summertime, that ain't the answer.
No.
So the, the budget right now, we're looking at a 2.4 cent increase in the tax rate. I think it was maybe 2.1 something before. Are we done? All right. Town administrators report, you're gonna cover eight items in 10 minutes, really?
10 minutes. To keep things moving. Item one, this is our liquor license renewal for timetables. They do not, this is part of a catering service, this is for the liquor license when they cater parties out.
Right. To approve the liquor license for timetables.
Second.
That just needs to be signed over there.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
Sorry, I should've had Judy highlight what line it is on there. There's a whole bunch more.
Authorized agent of corporation company.
If you want, we could sign that tomorrow with, with Judy, she knows the exact line.
Am I the only one that needs to sign it?
I believe so.
Okay, yeah, let me find out, 'cause there's.
Yeah, I should've had her highlight that.
It's not exactly obvious here.
I confess, I kinda forgot what line she pointed to.
Okay, I'll, I'll come by tomorrow and sign that if everybody's agreeable.
Yep.
All right, the second one is, this is from Vermont Planning and Development, it's part of a state law, Town of Shasberry flood hazard area regulations require that the town clerk certify that we're keeping track of them. Judy has done that here, it now requires the chair to also sign. And we have a line there for you to sign that one.
Motion to approve the flood hazard regulations, clerk certification.
Seconded by Tim Skagans. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Next item is the lease agreement for the McCarthy property next door. We had this and I've sent it to Mr. McCarthy's attorney today to review. I did not hear back from her, so I assume everything's well in hand.
Should we wait to hear back from them, or should we?
No, this is, Dennis would like us to go, actually, from speaking with him.
Three months now.
Yeah. It's, it's, the only, the only thing that was really changed here was, was what our attorney said we really shouldn't do, which is the letting it just transfer without us having any say.
Right.
And we put in a description of the property you can follow, not that it's eight iron rods from this place to the next, it's the.
Yeah, we put in the, the tax map description of the property.
Yes, that's fine.
So.
Motion to sign that.
Actually, it's a motion to, to allow, again, the chairman to sign, it has to be signed in the presence of the notary downstairs and all that stuff, so that's something else to sign tomorrow with Judy.
Okay.
Yep.
I move that the chair be allowed to sign the lease agreement with McCarthy for 10 years at $300 on the McCarthy property.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
400, Ken stepped out of the room. So I will come by tomorrow and sign that and write the correct date on it.
Okay, the next was the sign appointment policy that needs to be signed, but we have an issue with this. As, I believe only Mitch, you were on the board when this was passed.
And Ken was too.
Ken was too. The minutes from that meeting only say that the appointment policy was passed. It wasn't recorded with that. I have six different versions of this on my computer.
December 2nd one.
I think, well, I have the December 2nd one, but it's an issue that before we move further with it, I think we have to clarify because we could be violating a procedural rule of the state.
Well, the minute says it was passed, it was.
What was passed, though?
The appointment policy, the one that we were discussing that time, I mean.
Well, we don't know which one because it wasn't recorded. I have six versions on my computer.
Was.
Four have the same date on it.
So which one?
I don't know. That's the problem, I, I don't know.
It's ridiculous.
I know, but I don't know which one it is.
I love that. So what do you propose we do?
I just wanna look into if we, because there's only two members here, which isn't a quorum, I don't know if you, I can't see how you can vote on this or sign it without having a new year.
It's already been voted on, and it already has been approved. And we have the minutes. Let me go see, get the minutes here, see if I can find them quickly.
Does it have the policy? That's what Dave was saying, we have the, the minutes that say the policy was signed, but the policy itself was not attached to the minutes.
And we don't have a signed copy anywhere, which then leads me back to, I have at least four, all dated the same date in December.
And there's differences on each one of them?
Well, even if there isn't, and there are some, but the last one says final, so does the one before that. So there's only two of you left. This is a town policy that's being adopted, we have to know what it exactly was.
No, that's just it. On the last board, it was adopted unanimously. So I don't know how you can say this board, we have to re-adopt it. Other than that, other than a clerical error, which I'm sure can be remedied fairly easily.
Well, that's what I would like to see before we make a mistake and.
I have the final, I might, I, I have the final air that was sent to her.
To who?
Margie. At the, you know, after the final with non-substantive changes. And I can give that to you, and I'll send it out to everyone here again. And the whole purpose of this policy is because there was no policy. No one knew what boards were coming to, or being open. And we would go halfway through a year trying to get people to join a board, went this way, then announced in December, they're interviewed in January, February, appointed in June, or March, and are effective April 1st. That's the whole purpose of the whole policy.
And this one speaks all of the PC and DRB?
That's the PC and DRB specifically, yes.
So is there another policy that covers all these other forums and boards?
That was, those were the two.
So these are the two?
Those were the two.
Okay.
I wanted to do all the other boards, but they said that they, there was not enough people interest in the other boards to.
Well, we are following because the only people coming up for the DRB are Tom Huncherick, Chris Penessi, and Michael Day, I believe is correct, for this year. Oh, you also? Okay, you're not on this. Okay, and, and David Spurr on the planning commission, his term expires, and they've had a vacant one since, boy, last July or something.
And the policy states that by January 15th, they're supposed to have a letter of interest in, and then we're supposed to interview them, just precursory, make sure the public knows who they are, and appoint them.
Yeah.
Unless there's any other problems, I don't know any other problems with it.
Yeah, it's, it's just a question of whether it's, it's.
Well, how about if I suggested, you did send us a one that you thought was the, the final, is that right? Or am I remembering that email correctly? Okay. Which, I confess, I haven't re-studied it. I remember going, looking at it at that time. I was here, yeah.
So we had three people here that approved it. We have a forum that approved it last, last December 3rd.
Oh, you were here too, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I was. But I think in terms of just getting the, you know, doing the clerical work right and deciding which policy actually was approved, why don't we decide which one we think is the one that was approved and just re-approve it?
If you three signed it as three members who were here.
That voted on it and approved it last.
That would do, if you three all agree on, on the one of the four or five options, or if you have one and you three remember it as being the final one, I mean, we're just trying to record this.
There's nothing earth-shattering in there.
It, it's, it's procedural.
And we have, we do have a forum that were here last year.
Yeah, but I didn't realize it's three of you here, so that's good.
It's not actually just procedural. I just found out today offhand, running into somebody, that I'm supposed to have a letter of interest in by the 15th.
Yeah.
We can have it. And if he hadn't told me that, I wouldn't have had a letter in.
Yeah, the.
And that's, yeah. Before this policy was there, no one knew how to go about getting on any board or doing anything. And we had heard of it half a year with not even a full board.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's similar to what's going on in the planning commission now, they haven't had somebody, and we've had that posted, we've had that on the website, we've had it posted, and hoping someone will recommend somebody to come in. I mean, the, the idea of it, it's, is fine, it's just a question of, we couldn't find anything.
Well, I do, I remember us going through several iterations on that.
First, second, third, fourth reading, and the fourth reading was it.
But I'm not sure that I could look at a version and say that was the final version. That's why I'm suggesting we circulate a version and just sign it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because it was confusing to me when you were talking about, because you were saying about commissions and appoint, because this is strictly DRB and PC.
That's what it says, yep.
Yes, because the part you were talking about was dropped from it.
No, the other part that was in the minutes from last year were included by Margie. They were not necessarily necessary per the appointment policy, but to me, it made a lot of sense to include all open board positions, all appointed positions. But this specifically dealt with the DRB and the planning commission.
So you're saying what we approved was just for DRB and planning?
But it makes sense when you're making an announcement on the second meeting in December of all open board, appointed board positions, that you might as well put them all there, that's what Margie did. I didn't ask her, but it makes sense to me from a transparency perspective to let everyone know what positions are open.
Or are you suggesting that we change the policy?
Nope. Well, after we approve this, if you wanna include all those other boards, we could.
Maybe it'd be time to revisit the policy then, now, because maybe the best time to appoint people would be after the election.
No. Well, see, April 1st is the start of a term. After your election is March 6th. So how are we gonna get interviews and letters of interest and so forth between the 6th and April 1st? And get everybody to vote on it, or to get everyone to talk to them? That's why we backed it up to December.
Yeah, the first year I was on the board, two or three years ago, I don't think I was actually appointed to the board until sometime in June or July. It was well into the summer.
Yeah.
Because I just kept putting off interviews and everything else.
Well, there are two issues, is, one is how do we correct the clerical error that we didn't attach what we approved to the minutes at the time? And two, should we re-address the policy? I think we should, well, what's the board's pleasure?
Let's just take one at a time, let's, let's, let's correct the clerical error first and then we'll.
Go with the others.
Hold the other one later.
I like, I like that.
So let's, Mitch, Dave, and I will get together and see if we can agree what we think was the final version of it, and then we will circulate it, we'll all read it, we'll come back and approve it at our next meeting. Oh, speaking of our next meeting, you're. Oh, speaking of our next meeting, you're, you're going to make that announcement?
Yeah, I can bring that up under other business. All right, potential road name changes. The gentleman over here. Uh, which road?
I live on Sawmill Road.
Oh, okay, sure. What's happened is going through material that had stacked up here, we started going through correspondence and checking all the E nine one addresses and any conflicts with, with the state computer system. We submitted a bunch of documents to the state. Uh, we noticed too, had been going on a long time, on Sawmill Road, the two houses at the very top, I assume you're in one of those.
Yeah.
Have Lower East Road addresses, but they're actually on Sawmill Road. And the state is pretty much mandating that we change their address, the name of the street. Uh, that's why I had Shelley, you got a letter from Shelley, or she called you? Because I asked Shelley to call around and get suggestions of how we could correct this to an address that's acceptable or a name that's acceptable. It's the two houses, I have no explanation how, when the houses were built on that road, you got Lower East Road addresses when you should have got Sawmill. I have no way of explaining that, so. Uh, but we are, and this is not, to change this tonight, I wanted to make the board aware that we have your issue and another street's bigger issue with E nine one one, trying to go to the state with these things we discovered. I discovered one street had two houses with the same number on it. Uh, so we'd change that, which led to a bigger problem, and the state wants us to renumber the entire street and change its name. We'll get to that one in a minute. But if you want, want to speak about.
Like, I know, like.
Can you give us your, your name?
My name's Brian Beckhau. And there's two Sawmill Roads. One's in Bennington, off Colville Road, somewhere along that way.
Yeah.
And then there's ours. So sometimes when the post people come, they get our mail in Bennington, and then they have to, you know, transfer it over to us. But it's been Sawmill Road for at least, I don't know, fifteen years, I guess. But we don't have any, you know, when my wife talked to.
Shelley.
Shelley. And she checked the E nine one one address. And my wife decided, why not call it East Mountain Road in Shasburg? You know?
Yeah.
Because it's right at the base of East Mountain.
Yeah.
Is it East Mountain Road in Dorset?
Huh?
Is it East Mountain Road in Dorset?
Well, what happened with, with the Sawmill Road, because the post office brought this to our attention too, is that they, because the mail there comes from the Bennington post office, they would run into this confusion you were just talking about, about this mail going to the wrong locations. So because we're really only addressing two residents, I asked Shelley to contact the residents and see if they have suggestions on a name change for the street. We just need to, and it's really more for nine one one than mail. Theoretically, if it was punched in and the street signs were gone and everything, and you punched in five twenty-sixth or whatever it is, Lower East Road, the arc of East, Lower East Road would come in, and these are way up at Sawmill. You drive by, you see Sawmill, and it's like, well, you're not going to go looking up there. It does come up on the map, but it is in violation of the state regulations for this. So it is an easy fix as long as the residents are happy to just change the name of the road and, you know, well, I mean, we'd certainly take suggestions for the name of the road. And it would make your mailing issues easier. As far as with UPS and FedEx, because everyone's using the same GPS systems, and you enter a road, it doesn't come in right, and you enter an address, it doesn't come in right. So that hopefully will be one of the easier fixes with it. But it's not something that we intend to do without having you guys part of, which is why I had Shelley write the letters in the first place. Uh, but this is preliminary. When Shelley gets back with suggestions for names and we'll, we'll come in and I'll find out what the procedure is for changing the road name, and then we can send it up to the E nine one one and get it all straightened out.
Well, when my wife talked to Shelley and asked her, you know, Shelley asked her that East Mountain Road name, she said that there wasn't an East Mountain Road in Bennington or in Shasburg.
I think that's correct, yeah.
That's what she said.
Yeah.
So.
Well, then that would fit in, you know, and it doesn't, it's really just, if there's not one here.
Right.
It's good, and if there's not one in Bennington, because that's where your mail's coming from, that's really good. But if it's in another town, it doesn't matter that much as a Buckhill Road in Arlington. So, you know, it's, having a completely separate name from any road name in Bennington helps out because you don't get this mail issue and everything. And for nine one one, it'll work out fine for us.
Well, they've been to my house before.
Yeah. See, I told, I tried to tell them that they can find the houses.
They, they couldn't.
But yeah, it's one of those things, we're trying to correct things. And like I said, from whenever your house was built, I don't know how it got measured out to be on Lower East Road or anything, but the state says it violates several of the guidelines. And I have to agree with them, it does, it shouldn't have been. But if it's, you know, if it's amenable to you and your neighbors up there, it's just something we'll discuss over the next few weeks and come up with an alternate for you.
Okay. Sounds good.
And hopefully it'll be East Mountain, that's, has a nice ring, we'll have West and East Mountain. We'll offset the town.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you being reasonable about that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate after all these years to have to change, but. Yeah, it happens. The other more complicated one is Furnace Brook Road, which it was built, you know, almost like a cross. Now, it again violates a whole slew of requirements of the nine one one system because the numbers like curve in and come around, come up and come down, come back around. Uh, there were actually two houses on that street that had the same number, which I corrected a couple of months ago. And I've been trying to work with E nine one one because their original thing was, well, you have to rename all the streets. One of them has to have a different name, like the cross would have, the North-South Road would have to have a different name. And that would affect, um, maybe twelve, fifteen people. It was like, that's an awful lot of people to change their address and everything. So we've been kind of going back and forth on it. The latest suggestion, which is actually fairly good, is to regard the cross-sections as a common driveway. And it can be entered in and put in numerically so that a responder would know that's a common driveway to the south, and all these numbers run off it and they could follow it that way. The only thing I have to look into is, we maintain the road, so it's wording it in a manner that we continue maintaining the road while for nine one one, it's often is a common address, a common driveway for their system. It's, it's a conflict in wording really, more than anything else, but we have to try and make it work because I think that's just asking an awful lot of people to change their address.
Or not, maybe they'll all be as reasonable as Mr. Babcock.
Maybe they have a name in mind too, but I, I kind of think it would be even more confusing to come down to, you have almost equal numbers on the east-west axis and then equal numbers on the north-south axis, and it breaks off into two streets on one side and the other. It's, uh, if it's a new street, then we'd have to really change all the numbers instead of wrapping around. So it'll be a little complicated, but I want you to just be aware that this is another thing coming up. Other than that, we have taken care of pretty much all the nine one one issues in the town. And Shelley, I gave her that job the second she started. You know, you're now the official nine one one officer, and, and we've caught a lot of things. Judy Connect also spent a lot of time going through lots of papers to try and straighten this out. So these are the last two big issues that we have to settle.
Well, we'll be, we'll be ready to deal with it one way or another.
Yeah, when it comes up.
We got Town Service Officer?
Oh, Town Service Officer, I skipped right over that. I did not hear from the latest person of interest in that. I think it was the holidays. So hopefully we'll hear from.
Jackie.
Jackie, yes.
I could text her.
Yeah, yeah, and, and if she can just contact us and we'll, we'll put it up for the next one. But I think with the holidays, that was back in the fifteenth, the other last week, so.
Okay.
It's not a great pressing thing, but it's something we should take care of.
And we kind of skipped over the road report. We've talked a bit about the roads, but talk in particular about what we had to do to shore up in the recent rains.
Yeah, from basically Christmas Day, when it started raining and everything, as anyone knows, many of the roads had lots of problems. We did put in well over a thousand tons of material on, on the roads on the twenty-sixth and on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of last week. We did stop on Wednesday because they always closed. They closed at one o'clock and they did not reopen until today. So we had planned to continue on January second, but there was no material to be had, except for, I guess we could have gotten some from Barney's. Yeah, so we, we let that go. We are picking up again tomorrow. The crew had been out a lot this weekend with the different icing conditions, and this morning was difficult also, so they've been sanding and salting quite a bit. Tomorrow, it looks like we're going to have a break, so we're going to go around in more in a patching method of filling the big potholes. I think we still have Old Mill, Depot Road, I keep calling it Old Mill, Depot Road, to do part of Madison, I believe. Then there's a few, there's a few others that, parts of East Road that we want to go around and, and fill in the remaining, as many of the remaining potholes as we can. It won't be any big, long drag section, it'll be more like putting the, just dumping a little bit out, filling in the potholes, the larger ones, and keeping, keep moving. It's good because it got real solid, it didn't thaw a lot on Sunday like we thought it was going to. Because we were kind of afraid of all that material having been put in and that's going to start sinking in a big mud bath again. But now that's, the roads have gotten hard, the material will hold pretty good. It held pretty well today, and it's doing nothing but getting colder, so I think we'll do all right. And they are just going to take advantage of tomorrow and get as much in as possible. But other than that, they were out a lot this weekend, salting and sanding and trying to keep, keep the roads smooth.
Yeah, winter's supposed to be when we're worrying about plowing, not about mud season, but.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be nice if we had mud season now when it's supposed to come and not have to put that much material down again. Because that's when we get into the gravel. You want to, is sixty thousand dollars enough? Well, it is some years and not other years, you know?
Can't fight Mother Nature.
You can't. The only way you fight her is with more gravel. You know?
Do the best you can, Doc.
Yeah, yeah. But hopefully, like I said, we'll be in a normal season now, we won't get another really bad warm-up. I mean, even if it just warmed up, it wouldn't be that bad, but all that rain that came in over Christmas was tough. Uh, other than that, for the road department, we are going to be putting out bids soon, after we finish with the budget, to correct some of the OSHA issues, electrical problems that came in, ceiling problems. So there will be a few bids out for that. And then after that, we'll start looking here. The grader's still, the new bucket load is still working fine, still out running it every day, so. It has been, it has been handy. Again, I hate to give in, but it has been handy. It does, it does, it does do a lot of things pretty quickly. It certainly loads trucks quickly, but, and we actually, Terry had it out doing some roadwork on the twenty-sixth because everybody was kind of all hands on deck trying to get something done on the roads. So it actually has an effective use out there too. So time will tell. We won't give them completely yet, but it's worked so far.
Good.
That's about a short road version here.
And a reminder, you reminded me that we now put on the website contracts that we're putting out to bids so that anyone can look on the site and.
Yes.
And submit a proposal.
When these bids, any bid, and bid, I hate using the word bid, proposals or bids, bids being more the formal type of bids, there'll be proposals for, like, the electrical work in the garage. They will be out, and I might add something to that, was suggested to me by a local contractor, that maybe bids, new bids would come out on certain days. And as I wouldn't really be putting a bid out until after I spoke with the board, I was thinking maybe on the website, we'll just designate the new bids will be posted on the second or fourth Monday of the month. You know, basically the week after this leg board hearing. Because I won't be putting a bid out until I've spoken to the board about it, and so if anyone's watching, they'll hear about it, and then anyone who isn't watching will know that new bids come out on the, the second and fourth Mondays. And alls they have to do is look, and then they'll be set with it, especially for the, for the proposals, which will be far, far more than the bids. And the bids will all be a big formal thing anyway. But I think they'll get it out to everybody.
Good. Other business, you were reminding us that our next meeting is scheduled on Martin Luther King.
Yes, there's two problems with that. A, it's a holiday, and B, because it's a holiday, the state had to move back the final day to file a petition to have an article placed on the ballot. The main, one of the main functions of our meeting that night will be to approve the warning. So we need to move it to Tuesday because someone could come in with a ballot item up until Judy closes on Tuesday. So if we move the meeting to Tuesday, the twentieth, instead of Monday, the nineteenth, we'll move it off a holiday, and we'll also be having it so that if one more valid article comes in, I can add it to the warning before we bring it up here to finalize. And then we can get it out on the twenty-first.
Are we agreeable?
Can we meet earlier? I have a conflict there, and I got another meeting at that night.
I can, can the rest of you meet earlier?
Sure.
Do you want us, what time would you like to start?
Sooner the better. Five, five-thirty?
Do five.
Can you all do five on Tuesday, the twentieth?
Yep.
All right.
I'll leave by six-thirty.
So we can definitely get the warning up very early in, in it, so that we, we can go over that.
So if the last one she can receive is five, and that's when the meeting starts?
The, uh, no, it's on Tuesday. The last, the last one, if someone walks in right at five, I will just go on my computer and add a line in and bring it upstairs. But it's close of business day, our normal business day closes at three-thirty. So even if it is five o'clock, if someone walks in at five o'clock, I'll just go on the computer and add another line to it. We'll still get it done.
Good. Um, I remembered what I wanted to announce. For anybody that's watching at home, is I'm trying to collect information about where we don't have internet access in Shasburg. Uh, I've sent a few things to social media and got a few responses. Of course, the people that are going to respond on social media probably have internet, but what I'm hoping is that you'll be talking to your friends and neighbors and, or know anecdotally where there are cell phone holes and in particular where we don't have high-speed internet access. And I'd like to get that information and feed it back, one, to the Planning Commission, and two, to the, the state. The Planning Commission has indicated they've tried to work on this problem, but had, have had a hard time figuring out just exactly where the problem is. So, you know, it's all anecdotal, but at least maybe we could start to collect the anecdotes and, and feed back on that. When I look online, I was reminded that the promise of internet for everyone in Vermont by the end of 2013 is now a promise by the end of 2015. Lots of people have gotten internet, including me, during that, that time where I didn't have it before. But there are still places that don't, and if we're going to get it, we need to help identify the places where we need it. So send it to me, my, my email is on the web.
We don't get internet.
On Sawmill Road, okay.
They can't find it.
I would figure Shasburg, I live.
Where's Bill?
And do you, we don't have high speed, do we?
Yeah, we can. I have Fairpoint and Lon has Comcast. Comcast came down the road, but good luck trying to get them now because.
What you really have to do is be persistent.
You can't talk to Comcast.
Get the line to your house, and they'll give you an estimate, and then they'll tell me, well, that's really ridiculous, but I want to do it anyway. And I'll say, now, now we got to give you a real estimate. It's like, what, what did you just give me? Because that's what they did with me. I had to run, go from Jay's house, a third of a mile to get cable at my house.
But point is, you know, you can send me email or call me. My phone number is also on the, on the website. Or call Dave, he'll, he'll get ahold of me.
Yeah.
And let me know where, where we're having problems. Okay, action items, I didn't write anything down, but I remember that Dave and Tim and Mitch are going to figure out what appointment policy we think we did pass before, and we're going to identify the document and circulate it, and we will approve that at the next meeting. And we're going to identify the document and circulate it, and we will approve that at the next meeting. What else?
Because we're moving, really the main carry forward for the next meeting is just changing a couple lines on the budget. Adding the sheriff, actually, it's only adding the sheriff in. And we'll recalculate those columns tomorrow.
Yeah, I captured that tonight.
Calculated already, so it's, it's all changed.
If you send it to you, yeah.
And then I'll be writing the warning for the next, for the next meeting, and then that'll be the main agenda item. We'll be writing the warning. And we'll agree on whatever the last draft of this is, and this is easily, I think, because you have three guys who are on it. Just sign it so we can put it in, in the book correctly.
Okay.
And then, I think is it, the road updates and things like that. But the budget will most certainly, and the warning, will be the main, main item for that meeting.
Okay. And just keep in mind, as we're going forward towards the election, we also have the zoning issues that we're going to be putting to the voters that we're gonna be campaigning on, so that.
And those are all on the website too.
Yes, and they all have to be in the warning too.
Okay. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.